Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Town of Corder Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, November 29th, 2022. Would you please take a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Kenny Thompson, Commissioner Bundy, Commissioner Bandell, Chair Chase,
Here.
And Vice Chair Rizzo.
Here.
Would you please join me in a salute to the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point in every meeting, we open the meeting to comment for that is not which is on tonight's agenda. So if you have something you'd like to say, please step up to the podium and you have three minutes in which to do that. And you may raise a hand if you're attending virtually. Is there anybody who wishes to say anything tonight? Okay, I see no one standing at the podium. And do we have any raised hands?
If not.
Okay, we will close then this open time for public comment and we will go right to our new hearings. So tonight, we have two items. The first item is 89 Birch Avenue. This is a major design review application, PL 22-0069, to add a 1,016 square foot second level addition to an existing single-story home at 89 Birch Avenue. Martha, you are the presenter for this.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Chase, Commissioners and members of the public. This evening you will be, excuse me, this evening you will be considering a design review application for a second story addition at 89 Birch Avenue. The project also includes some minor changes to the lower level of the residence. The project site is located at 89 Birch Avenue in the Madera Gardens neighborhood. It's located in the northern portion of the subdivision. The project site is relatively flat and it's much larger than many of the other parcels in the area. It's accessed by Birch Avenue and there are two single-family residences adjacent to the project site, which include 93 Birch Avenue and 85 Birch Avenue. There are additional single-family homes located across Birch Avenue and located in an easterly direction are condominiums across the High Canal. The project site is zoned R1, medium-density residential, and the proposed project meets the various development standards of the zoning district, including parking, setbacks, height, lot coverage and floor area. Now, the project site is irregularly shaped. It's located in the floodplain and the project is not required to be raised since the value of the improvements are less than 50% of the existing structure. The applicant provided both a construction cost estimate and an appraisal report and the proposed valuation is approximately 39% of the existing structure. The proposed second story addition is outlined in red. It's located closest to the property at 85 Birch Avenue. The proposed second story setback is 10 feet, 6 inches to this side property line and 16 feet, 16 inches to the other side property boundary. The rear yard includes a sport court, turf, a swimming pool and a hot tub and no changes are proposed to the rear yard. The existing lower floor includes four bedrooms, three bathrooms, an office, a living room, a kitchen and a family room. As part of the project, the applicant proposes to remove one of the existing front bedrooms and that's being removed to accommodate the staircase to the upper floor and also to increase the size of the porch 66 square feet. So the habitable square feet is changing from 2,614 square feet to 2,548 square feet and no changes are proposed to the existing garage. The proposed second floor is 1,016 square feet. It includes four bedrooms, two bathrooms and a family room/sitting room. And access to all of the bedrooms are provided from this family room area. The south elevation is the front elevation that faces the street. The existing elevation is 16 feet, 1 inches. It includes the 30 square foot entry porch and the garage. And as mentioned, one of the bedrooms is being removed on this lower level and you can see the change to the windows from two windows on the lower level to one. And three windows are proposed on the upper floor. And in addition, there is a shed dormer proposed over the center window, which includes four smaller windows. And the proposed height is 25 feet. The west elevation faces the neighbor at 93 Birch Avenue. This elevation includes three windows, which includes an egress window in one of the bedrooms, a clear story window in a bathroom and then another window in the other bedroom, which is set back an additional eight feet from the wall plane. And similar to the west elevation, the east elevation also includes three windows. Again, one in the egress window in one of the bedrooms, a clear story window in a bathroom and then an additional window that has a setback of eight feet beyond the wall plane. The north elevation faces the rear yard. There are no neighbors located behind the project site. It's behind the project site is the Larkspur Trail. This rear elevation includes four windows, which include two windows, one in each of the bedrooms and then two windows, two clear story windows in the bathroom. The existing residence includes dark gray shingles, gray stucco and siding, white trim and a blue entry door. And there are existing solar panels located above the garage, which you can see on the picture on the right. And these solar panels will be removed as part of the project. The proposed project includes horizontal siding and board and batten siding, painted light gray to match the existing residence. And the trim and windows will be white also to match the existing residence. And all new lighting will be dark sky compliant. As part of the project, the applicant provided the project plans and a project summary to all of the immediate neighbors. The letter also included a spot to indicate support for the project through a signature. And the applicant submitted 19 letters of support. And the neighbor at 66 Birch Avenue also submitted an email to the town indicating their support of the project. And to date, no objections have been raised. A number of homes in this part of Madera Gardens have added second stories, which have resulted in a mix of one and two-story homes. This slide shows three of the second story additions on Birch. The picture on the left is 46 Birch Avenue, which was approved by the commission earlier this year and that project is currently under construction. And this slide shows four additional pictures of second story additions on Birch Avenue. In order to approve the project, the planning commission must make the required design review findings. A staff is able to make all of the findings. There's a discussion in the staff report and the resolution on an analysis of the findings and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. And the applicant and architect are also here and available for questions as well.
Thank you. Before we get to the presentation, I just want to check with the Commissioners very quickly. See if they have any questions of your staff report. Bob? Yeah, I can't hear Bob.
No questions?
Okay. Hey, Margaret?
Uh, this time.
Okay. And Mr. Rizzo?
The only question I have is, was there any correspondence with the neighbor to the east, 85?
Yes, the owner reached out to the four residences, 75, 79, 81 and 85 to the east and received, I think, some emails and text message correspondence from them.
Yes.
Oh, oh, sorry. I was thinking Sandpiper. Nothing from 85 Birch.
So no negative comments or anything that we have to address or anything like that?
We did not receive any comments.
Okay, thank you. That's great.
Thank you. Okay, so on the applicant's side, who's going to start the presentation or make a presentation?
Hi, I am Crystal Huff. I reside at 89 Birch Avenue. Thank you very much for all your time and being here. I am there with my husband and we have four children, ages eight, six, three and 10 months. So it's three boys and then a girl. We bought our house in 2015 when I had one child and I was pregnant with my second and we we fell in love with the neighborhood. It was probably a quick decision for us because we bought it as one of the first houses we saw, but our realtor was like, you'll love this. It's wonderful. Trust me. And we love where we are and we did some renovations before moving in. We've put in the pool and I never thought I would have four children, but now I have four children and my second son goes, Mom, am I ever going to have a room to myself? And I said, well, we can, we can talk with your dad about that. So anyway, now that we have four children, we are hoping to expand and put them all to they have their own bedrooms on the top level and we are hoping to stay in our neighborhood. We love where we are. We love all the people around us. As part of what Martha was saying, I reached out to a lot of people in the neighborhood who have, a lot who are in favor. I spoke with the people on Sandpiper. I hand-delivered letters to all of them. I spoke to three of them on the phone. One of them invited me to their house to come look at it. Another one came and met me outside my house and I met with another one on the path. And they were all first very grateful that I reached out to them before story polls went up and just explaining what was going on and have conversations with them. And then 93 Birch Avenue to the right of me, I know, put in a letter. And then the 85 Birch, to your question, Peter, they are actually also going through the process of, they'll probably be in front of you in a few months, wanting to put an addition up as well. So I assume that they have no issues as they are going to be going forward with hopefully the same type of plans. I don't know what else I can say, but I think that's it.
Okay, and who would like to follow that up? Anybody in presentation?
Yes, this is Eric Clayton. I'm the architect. Evening and thank you for hearing this, this application. And first, you know, Martha has done a great job of helping us basically put together a complete application. I've worked with the Huff's for a few months now, really focusing on how to accommodate their, hopefully maybe growing or grown families. So, but the, the goal was to get an individual room for each of their children in a modest smuff space on the second story. We're obviously attempting to and have conformed to the FEMA guidelines to stay within the, what would you call the depreciated value of the existing improvements are under 50% and we did. And we also provided a comprehensive cost analysis to make sure that we, we stay within that. Just because lifting the existing structure would have been, because it's fairly spread out on the lower level, it would have been quite a challenge. So we stayed within that. The other challenge really is to make sure that the upper floor was not particularly impactful on the neighbors. We're lucky in that the parcel spreads out to the rear and so the side yard setbacks were already getting relief as we built on top. The other concern was the electrical wires to the west and we had to make sure that we're not impacting that and we're well outside of those, those impacts to the electrical grid. But the upper floor is stepped back at least five to eight feet in from the lower levels on all the side and front and stacked on the rear and the back, but there's far less impact back there. Our other concern was the impact on views. And really, we kept the lower level at eight feet and the floor-to-floor is only 12 inches and then the upper level is again only eight feet. So we kept it at essentially a minimum. The upper floor roof slope is very reasonable at 4 and 12. So it, it really does maintain a low profile and really doesn't seem to have much of an impact on the views or shade or shadows or really kind of the bulk or masses is pretty light in far as the balance. It's also the upper level is about a third the square footage of the lower square footage. So it's, it's balanced in that regard. And then we wanted to keep it in keeping with the neighborhood as far as the exterior fixtures and finishes. You know, the siding, batten board or the horizontal siding and the stucco all kind of blends together and is definitely something that's specific or common in the neighborhood. So I won't go too far into all of the details because Martha really has covered the vast majority of the specific details about the design. But I would love to save a little bit of my time for questions that anybody might have. So I could, I could wrap it up now and then be available for any additional questions.
Okay, well, thank you. Stay right there and we'll see who has questions for you. I'll start with Mr. Rizzo. Do you have any questions for Eric?
Um, just one. Eric, thanks for your presentation. You mentioned that the upper, the upper roof was a four and 12, but the drawings are showing a six and 12. Are you guys gonna?
That was my mistake. Nope, that's my mistake, but we still are five feet below the the maximum height limit of 30 feet. So we're at 25 feet. So we're well below it.
Was that just an aesthetic move to go with a, with a steeper pitched roof?
Yeah, I mean, what I normally do is on a, if there's two levels and we're setting back, the lower level usually is at a lower pitch and it's, that's four and 12 is the lower roof. And then to get on the upper level, I like to have a little bit more pitch so that you can actually experience the roof. So it doesn't look like it's a flat roof up there. So and as long as it's not terribly impactful on, on views or shade or anything to the neighbor, I tend to do it a little bit steeper on the upper.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Margaret, do you have any questions for Eric?
What? I noticed. And I just, I went by the site, but I didn't study it carefully. That's my issue over Thanksgiving weekend. But what made, what, what design decision did you make to, to sort of put it over to one side, the second story rather than locate it more centrally?
Really good question. So early on, we needed to make sure that we could, number one, have circulation between the lower level and the upper level. If you look at the lower floor plan as it exists, it is the original footprint of, of all the homes that were there in the, you know, in the mid 50s. And then there was an addition that comes out to the back. That is for essentially a family. It's a great room, family room, kitchen and a master suite off the end of that. If we were to try and come around that corner, it really would have been a difficult design challenge for starters to make it look like it had always been there. Number one, that angle that comes off of the original structure makes it challenging to go, okay, let's, let's design something that really feels like it was always there. When you put something off at an angle, it's kind of hard. So we just committed to the thought that most people are going to experience this building from, from Birch for seeing the front of it or from the bike paths around the back. And from the bike paths around the back, you're really going to see the upper floor. So we simply focused on putting it over the original building. It also allows us to accommodate the FEMA challenge because we're able to put the structure right over the foundations that are there and have very limited impact on the existing foundations. We can do spot foundations to accommodate it. So for multiple reasons, it made sense to put it there. And it's still stepped back and accommodates and conforms to all the setbacks. So it felt right.
I haven't.
All right. And one thing I wanted to add is because Sandpiper behind across the canal, if we were on the longer part, it actually I think would hinder their views or impact their views more because of which the angle of what they're at. And I only knew that after kind of the story polls have gone off. And then when I went and I was in some of their backyards looking up because their view comes over that long part that's elongated. So there's less impacts from them just being in the front of the house.
Thank you, Crystal. That's a very good point.
So my other question is this because this family moved in in 2015. It's been kind of dry since then, but I was here when that whole neighborhood flooded. Aren't you worried about that kind of impact without raising it?
Well, the, the main level on this house is, I think it's four feet above the street level. It would fully inundate, it would require, a flood would require to be fully inundating that neighborhood to a level of three or four feet in deep of water. Now, that's certainly possible, but, but 90% of the homes in that neighborhood would also be flooded. I don't take it lightly that we are experiencing sea level rise. This particular residence, if we, if we were to, it just wouldn't have worked financially. It would have costs at least a half million dollars more to do this project and lift it just because of the, how spread out the existing residence is and it just wouldn't have been accomplishable.
Don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Margaret. How about you, Dr. Bundy?
I'll just make a comment in relationship to Margaret's question about the FEMA requirement. In contrast to my neighborhood, Mariner Cove, which is subject to tidal flooding, the Madera Gardens is actually protected by the High Canal Pump Station and the levees along Corder Madera Creek. Now, they're not necessarily Corps of Engineers approved levees, but they've been there in existence for a long period of time. And since the High Canal Pump Station went in, there has not been flooding in that community. We give DPW a lot of credit for maintaining the pump station, you know, maintaining the, you know, the drainage areas. So I think it's not as critical in Madera Gardens as it would be in my neighborhood, subject to tidal flooding.
Nothing further, Bob? Okay, thank you. Myself, I do not have any questions for the owners or for the architect. So unless they have something else they want to say, then we'll open it up for public comment.
No, but thank you very much for hearing the application.
Thank you. All right. This is the custom and the procedure here. We will open this to public comment for anyone that wants to step up to the podium or raise their hand virtually. And you have three minutes to make a comment. I don't see anyone.
Yeah, no hands raised, Peter, but there is an email that Martha has that she'll read for the commission when you're ready to turn to them.
And first I'd like Ann Danforth to speak about the comment. It's from Commissioner Kenny.
There is, there's one hand raised now, Peter, if you want to jump back.
Okay.
This is from Delio. I'm going to unmute you and you'll need to unmute yourself and we should be able to hear you.
Hi there. Hi, I'm Delio Tremontosi. I live at 85 Birch next door to Crystal and Jason. We didn't, we were on vacation and running around and apologies. He was kind enough right many weeks ago to send us an email and we've always, we've been conversing with her for months now about her plans and we have our own plans as well. We just, I just wanted to get it on record that we, we fully support Jason and Crystal and their, and their family, their, their wonderful neighbors and I think their design choices and what they're planning on doing is, is really great and respectful. So just wanted to let you guys know that we have been in contact. It wasn't our intention to not write out the letter that as she was hoping for us to do in time, we just didn't get to it on business. That's all. Thank you.
That was.
Great. 85. Thank you.
And I'll now turn it over to Ann, Ann Danforth, to speak.
Yes, just briefly, this may be obvious, but since the commissioner is not here tonight, his comments are of course in his capacity as a member of the public. He's not going to be participating in the actual decision. So I'm sure the commission will understand and take his comments in that light. And that's all I wanted to say.
Great, thank you. Okay, Martha?
Okay, so this is a comment from Dan Kenny. He made site visits to both 89 Birch and 125 Yolo, viewed the story polls and stored toward the general neighborhoods. In regards to 89 Birch, the staff report indicates consistency with the general plan implementation program, CD 2.4A and required design review findings. There appear to be no negative impacts on neighbor views or privacy. The proposed project design improves the character of the street elevation consistent with other two-story additions in the neighborhood. While not voting, I am support of conditional approval of major design review application.
All right, thank you. All right. No other raised hands or any public comment at this point, is that correct?
Correct, Chair Chase.
All right. Thank you. So we'll close the public comment section and we will turn it over to review and consideration of this application. So it's time to come forth with your thoughts and opinions on this. I'll start with you, Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, I'd like to compliment Eric on the design, especially the, the street presentation looks particularly good. I think that's improved that significantly. It certainly fits in with the neighborhood. The, the lot is very large and it can accommodate the size of the house that exists there as well as the addition. In contrast to, you know, one project that we looked at several times where it was a difficult lot and the, the size of the second story was sort of overwhelming the lot and the neighborhood and we rejected it. In this case, I agree that I can make all the findings and I support the project.
Thank you, Bob. That's very clear. I'll turn to you, Margaret, for your comments on this.
I am especially appreciative of the, the careful consideration to the heights of the building and for that neighborhood. Because a lot of the second stories that get put on really sort of reach to the sky and overwhelm everything around it. And I, I think you were extremely considerate and careful about what you're putting and how you're fitting into the neighborhood and what you're putting there. And I, I compliment you for all the neighbors that you contacted. And I'm glad to see that 85 spoke up because that pretty much rounds up everybody's comment about it. I think that you'll enjoy the addition to your home and I, I wish you a lot of luck with all your kids. I can make all the findings.
Thank you, Margaret. All right, Chicago, are you there?
I'm here. I agree with both the other, both Commissioners. I think it fits very nicely in with the neighborhood and, and that, that other square footage is nicely tucked behind where you can't really see it, really fits in with the neighborhood for the square footage of the, of the whole project. And it definitely hits on some of our, our goals as a community with improving the housing stock and fitting in with that, the neighborhood fabric. So I'm also in favor of all the findings.
Thank you, Jim. Well, I'll make a force in here. Well, I'll make a force in here and I would agree with all the previous comments. It's, um, simple to make the findings in this case. Uh, I think it was a well-done set of plans, uh, and the architecture is well considered. It, um, makes something out of this, uh, ranch house that, um, is much better. And, um, I think it's done well, good palette, um, good change to the windows. Um, and, um, it's a good layout. So it's one of those rare properties that's going to have a lot going for it. And, um, it's really great to see this get underway. Um, yes, you're supporting the Court of Madera Schools, so thank you for that. And, um, we'll, we'll move on to see if anybody can make a motion for this.
Uh, in the matter of major design review application to add 1,016 square foot second story level. And to reconfigure the existing layout on the first floor by converting 66 square feet of living area. To an enlarged front entry porch at 89 Birch Avenue. This is file PL 22-0069-DRC. I move to approve.
Second.
All right, that's great. Please take a roll call.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Chair Chase?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
And noting that Commissioner Kenny is absent. And to read the appeal rights, uh, following action by the commission at a public hearing. Any decis- any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department and the fee is $300.
Congratulations.
Four kids. Okay, good luck. That's wonderful. Okay. So. Item B, next hearing. Is 125 Yolo Street. This is a major design review application, PL 22-0053. For a 305 square foot first level addition and then 843 square foot second level addition. To an existing single story home at 125 Yolo. And, uh, Tracy Hagerty is going to make the presentation.
Thanks, Chair Chase. And Vice Chair Rizzo and Commissioners, good evening. Um, this evening, the commission is considering, as Peter said, major design review application, PL 22-0053. For a 305 square foot, uh, first level addition and an 843 square foot. Um, second level addition to the existing single story home at 125 Yolo Street. 120, 125 Yolo Street is located, um, at the eastern side of the Marina Village neighborhood. Um, this side of the neighborhood was developed in the early 1960s, about a decade after the Echo Harbor portion of subdivision to the west. Um, the eastern edge in the neighborhood is characterized by, um, larger lots. Um, larger residences with two-car garages. Um, and most homes depart from the, um, architectural style of those homes, um, in the western portion, uh, of the neighborhood. Um, the neighboring property at Six Channel, um, just north of the project site is developed with a two-story, single-family home. And just southeast, um, of the project site at 129 Yolo is a single-story home. Um, and across San Clemente Creek, um, about 200 feet away is the Mariner Cove, um, subdivision. Project site is Zoned R1 Medium Density Residential. Um, it, the project complies with all the development standards in the R1 zone, um, including lot coverage. Floor area, parking setbacks, um, and height. The project site is a corner lot, um, at the intersection of Yolo Street and Channel Drive. And our code dictates that for a corner lot, the front property line is the shortest property line abutting the street. So in this case, that means that Channel Drive is the front property line. And that would mean that the Yolo Street property line is street-side. Um, even though the front of the existing home is oriented towards, towards Yolo Street, that is, that is street-side. Property line. The lot is irregularly shaped, it's flat. Um, it has a net area of land of 11,957 square feet. Um, and the proposed additions are situated to the southeast corner of the existing, um, single-story building, uh, outlined. Um, in red, uh, on the right-hand site plan is the proposed site plan. The additions are closest to the neighbor at 129 Yolo Street. And are set back from that side property line by 10 feet, seven inches, um, where six feet is required. And the existing single-story home is 1,795 square feet. Um, with a 457 square foot attached garage and consists of three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. Um, the proposed project, as I stated before, includes a 305.8 square foot first level addition. It's, it's covered up, sorry, uh, outlined in dashed red there on the right-hand side of the screen is the lower level addition. It consists of a new den slash gym and a half a bath. Um, it's positioned behind the existing garage in the area, um, that today exists a covered, um, patio off the rear elevation. And at the front of the home, just next to the entry, um, the existing laundry will be reconfigured to accommodate the interior. Stairs to the new second level. And that 843 square foot second level addition includes a new primary suite. Um, so that would be, uh, the primary bedroom, bathroom and a walk-in closet. It also includes, um, an office. It's proposed to be positioned over one side of the home, over the existing two-car garage and the first level addition. It also, the project, project also includes a 103 square foot terrace. Above the first level addition facing the rear yard, um, to capitalize on views directed to the water. And to the horizon beyond, um, the terrace, uh, will be accessed from the proposed, uh, new second story primary suite. And the existing front elevation, um, of the home includes the attached two-car garage, the front entry door. Um, a small, uh, 47 square foot front porch. Um, and features three arched openings at the middle of the facade. Um, these dated arches will be replaced with traditional openings and a new garage door, um, at the lower level. Obviously, the, the wall plane of the proposed second story addition. On this elevation is aligned with the wall plane of the garage, um, directly below. And then the portion of the second story whose ridge runs parallel to the existing home is set back an additional three feet from there. Um, the height of the existing home is 15 feet, nine inches. Um, and the height of the home with the second story is 21 feet, nine inches. Um, at the rear elevation, the addition to the first level will be cited in the location of the existing covered patio, um, behind the garage. Um, this addition includes a new French door to access the rear yard, um, paired with two side lights on either side. Um, to let natural light into that room. At the new second story, a, a four-panel door, um, is shown. To provide access to the terrace that's proposed above the first level addition. And the terrace is 17 feet, two inches in width and six feet in depth. For an approximate size again of 103 square feet. And the additions, um, are about 106 feet from the rear property line. Um, shown here is the east elevation, um, the east elevation faces 129 Yolo Street. The first and second story additions and the proposed second story terrace. Will be set back two feet from the existing east wall plane. At the first level, this translates to a setback distance of 10 feet, seven inches. Um, from the side property line, um, the required side yard setback again is six feet. This elevation includes three new windows, um, at the second story, two-bedroom windows and ones in the bathroom. Um, and one new window at the first level, uh, addition. The proposed terrace is 10 feet, two inches, um, in height, that's measured from finished grade to surface level. Um, the east elevation of the home, that's, that's facing the neighbor's side yard. Um, where the neighboring home has two windows, um, that face the project site, those two windows, um, are bathroom windows. And at the west elevation, um, this new second story includes one new window. Um, and at its closest point is approximately 67 feet from the neighboring side property line that's shared with six channel. Um, the corner of the terrace is 65 feet from that property line. Um. The project site is located in, uh, the FEMA Special Flood Hazard Area. Um, within this, uh, flood hazard area, FEMA and Corps of Madera regulations require that. The finished floor of a home be raised to one foot above base flood elevation. Um, if the sum total of all construction costs in the last five years are equal to or exceed 50% Of the appraised value of the structure. Um, the applicant provided, um, a detailed construction cost estimate. And they have provided a, uh, recent appraisal. Um, the appraised value, the depreciated value of the existing home was 1,189,930 dollars. And this project cost is 540,002 dollars. Um, what you're seeing on this slide is two scenarios. One, um, that shows that if a building permit was issued prior to May 2023. The house, um, would be deemed, the project would be deemed a substantial improvement because the total. Um, the cumulative total of improvements in the last five years would include the kitchen remodel. Um, and we'd be more than 50%, you could see it'd be 62.7%. And the second table just to the right, um, is the second scenario. If a building permit was delayed until at least May of 2023. The 2018 kitchen remodel would no longer be considered a related improvement. Um, because it would fall beyond the five-year time limit. And the recalculated ratio would fall to 48 and a half percent, which is obviously less than 50. And the house would not, the project would not be deemed a substantial improvement. Um, and the applicant is well aware of these floodplain regulations. They've worked with the Public Works Department on the timing of their permitting. Um, you also note in, um, the resolution, there are, uh, conditions of approval from Public Works as a floodplain administrator. Uh, clearly stating, um, what I just talked about, uh, and what those regulations are. Um, and, and detail the, the timing that we're talking about. Um, and lastly, there's a standard condition of, of approval that the planning department includes related to changes to approved plans. Um, and if, um, the house were to be raised, obviously that's a change to an approved plan. And the permanent amendment, um, would need to be applied for and reviewed again by the planning commission. Um, this slide just shows, uh, some color and materials. There's a board in front of you if you're curious to see, uh, the physical board. Um, the existing home is dark blue with white trim. Um, and the applicant's proposing to utilize, uh, white stucco combined with a whitewashed, um, horizontal cedar siding. Um, dark gray composition shingles, uh, white-clad windows. Um, and there are some exterior lights, um, that would be wall-mounted, uh, in color dark, um, dark bronze. And the Yolo Channel Edgemar Baja area of Marina Village includes a mix of one and two-story. Homes, um, with a variety of architectural styles. These are some examples I'll show you of the two-story homes. Two-story homes can be found on, um, each of the streets in the compact, uh, eastern part of Marina Village. Um. There are 48, um, homes, um, in that fourth street area and. Um, eight of them are, are two-story. Sorry, you can't see the one on the right. Staff is able to make all designer review findings, um, and the commission, um. Uh, would need to make those as well. An analysis of those findings is included, um, in the staff report and in the resolution, um, attached to the staff report, the attachment one. Staff is recommending, uh, approval of this application. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, um, the property owners are here with their architect if you have, um, questions for them as well, uh, later on.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation, Tracy. Um, uh, I'm going to check with the commissioners first to see if they have any questions about the information you've just provided. Um, uh, I'm going to start with you, Dr. Bundy. Do you have any questions for Tracy about that?
I, I did want to make a comment, uh, on the, the FEMA requirement. If this was, uh, 50% or greater of the depreciated value of the home. Uh, the, uh, Mariner Cove number five, where this house is located, as you said, was later development. There was more fill brought in and it's actually a higher elevation than, uh, most of, uh, Mariner Cove, uh, west of there. Or east of there. The, um, as I understand it from, uh, talking with, uh, RJ, that the threshold elevation is 10.5 of the existing house. The FEMA requirement would be to raise it to 11. And so that would be a huge expense for a very small amount to, to elevate the house. For very little protection or, or benefit. Over the next number of decades, so I sort of support the calculations. And unless the, the house was out of level, which it does not appear to be. Yeah, there's probably not a good rationale for actually raising it, uh, to that standard since you're not required to do it.
Believe that it was actually, the property was mapped in, in the 2016 increase to base flood elevation. It was previously not, um, in flood zone AE before that.
That's correct. Right. Uh, Margaret, any questions for Tracy?
I do. I have, um, a question about, it's on page five. It's in the section, "Design Review Required Findings." And number five, I'm looking at.
Page five?
Not, no, design review finding number five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I guess I had never, oh, I mean, I'm sorry, number four.
Yes.
And I had never noticed this before. But the last sentence, "Overall, the project and site plan are in scale and harmonious With existing and future development adjacent to the site." So do we know that there's going to be future development adjacent to this site?
We never do. We, we, we mostly never do know that there's going to be future development. I would assume that there is. Um, as people have, uh, or address, as people address deferred maintenance, um, or as properties, uh, are bought and sold. Um, or as ownership, uh, families grow and change, that, that there would be.
I, I just never noticed that before, that.
Yes, and it, it also doesn't say that it's in scale and harmonious with existing development at the site. Which.
I guess we should focus that. I, I did have a, um. A concern about the, the, uh. The floodplain. Um. But I can go into that later. It's not really a question.
Okay. Good, um, Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions for Tracy at this point?
Um, Tr- Tracy, uh, can you reiterate the, the code for the front yard? Uh, the front yard, uh, determination? So it's, it's the shorter of the two that, that creates the front yard.
Yes, and, and you actually have to look at the, the angle. Is it a, is it a corner lot and it, it depends on the angle of the intersection? So we looked at that first. Is it even a corner lot? Um, and it is.
What's it have to be, buddy?
Uh.
Sorry, it, it's not that important if you have to research, I'm just curious.
I think it's 135 degrees of.
You don't have, don't have to go deep into it. I, as long as you guys determine it. And it, it, and you, so you. And it it and you, so you determined that the angle's got to be a certain and then you've got to.
Yeah, I think it's around one hundred and thirty five degrees or or tighter. And then it's says that the front property for a corner lot, the front property line is the shortest property line. The shortest street facing property line is how it reads.
Okay. And and my second question, just about the whole FEMA thing is, are you required to lift the whole house or just whatever's under the addition?
It's the whole house, except the garage. So whatever is occupied by humans.
Oh, so even if even if you're not doing the addition on that part of the house, it's a requirement?
You would, right, right. And and elevating just an addition is optional. It's not required unless it's, of course, substantial improvement, then the entire finished floor is has to go up.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I I just wanted to check to be sure I understand this for my own benefit, not that it impacts the consideration of this that much. But they are not going to have to wait until May to get this thing built.
They they do have to wait until at least May of twenty twenty three, when when the clock would reset on that kitchen remodel permit. And the reason they would have to wait is because their floodplain development permit would reflect the sum total of the last five years, including the kitchen remodel and will be at sixty two percent. Waiting and to get a floodplain development permit and building permit until after May, would you just be adding this project plus the solar project to determine your substantial improvement ratio?
Kid argue with the ordinance. It's written in stone. Right. But I would if I could. So, okay. It's time then to move on and have the architect and the owner make their statements or presentation.
Hi, commissioners. My name is JR Garibaldi. I'm here with my wife Alicia Garibaldi. And we're the homeowners at one two five Yolo. I just want to start by thanking Tracy for all of her good work and efforts throughout, really, the good part of the last few months on our application and thank the commissioners for their time tonight and certain of you who took time out of your holiday schedules to come visit our project and learn more about it. I was kind of chuckling earlier because we have a very similar story as the prior applicant that was in here and frankly, a somewhat similar project in many respects. My wife and I moved here to Corredama Dera about seven, eight years ago. We had a little two year old and knew that more were coming and we're looking to find ourselves a nice neighborhood to grow our family. And we settled in here to Mariner Cove and Marina Village somewhat, I think luckily at that time. Our family has grown and we welcomed our third child last year, early last year. And we are strapped for some space in the current three bedroom house that we live in. My two girls are sharing a little room and one of them's about ready for her own room. And this is family planning, if you will, to try and make the home that we've grown to love in the neighborhood, we've grown to love now a forever home for us. And by adding really a fourth bedroom for us, unlike the prior applicant who was trying to move all the kids upstairs, we're trying to move upstairs and keep the kids downstairs. You know, we again, we we really, you know, took a hard look at the market and the costs and I'll talk about that in a second. And it was kind of an easy decision for my wife and I to stay in this neighborhood. We've made a lot of friends there. Kids have friends there. And, you know, it's a place we want to be for a long time. And so we embarked on this process really over a year ago. I started by educating myself on really a lot of these FEMA standards and spoke with Phil Boyle probably last November about kind of how the whole process worked. And then started working, knowing that this was going to take some time and knowing that my wife and I are both quite busy with work and kids and everything else and not wanting to have to rush to be able to have the time to kind of develop our plans and think through things. And so really, we've spent frankly, most of this year working through our design from really a cost efficiency standpoint, a design standpoint, a neighbor outreach standpoint to arrive at what you've seen today. My wife and I are very close with many of the neighbors there on Yolo and Channel and the surrounding areas. We approached all of them in person earlier this summer. Spoke with all of them about the plans, showed them our plan set. You know, received really what we had frankly hoped for, which was a whole bunch of support and, you know, excitement about, you know, being able to stay in the neighborhood with our family. And, you know, we've, I think, been very active with really the ten or so neighbors that are around us on Yolo and Channel and making sure they've been up to speed on all of our plans. And, you know, really haven't received any opposition or objection from any of them and certainly try to be courteous. And we'll be courteous to them if we can, you know, get to the construction. As I mentioned earlier, we we really started with one, you know, seeing if we could keep it a single story ranch home. That's when I discovered this somewhat an oddity for me that technically the front of our house is actually on Channel Street, not Yolo Street. And what I thought was maybe a side yard setback instead of our front yard setback and for a variety of reasons, kind of extending out onto the side yard, what I call the side yard along Channel Street was frankly too tight and didn't work from a design design standpoint. We then looked at frankly, you know, an addition over the, I'd say, main, I guess, area of the house. That had a couple of issues for us. The first was, truthfully, the cost associated with it on the existing foundation. And then the fact that it would have meant we would have had to move out to do the remodel, which wasn't appetizing for a whole variety of reasons to us. And so, you know, ultimately, we settled on, you know, a one bedroom really addition above the garage area and what's now the outside patio area. Which after multiple geotechnical reports and discussions with a couple of different structural engineers and general contractors was really kind of the most cost efficient option for us. And also, I think, was from from both of our opinions, I think the, you know, the easiest to to get to. It will allow us to continue to live in the house during the project because really the living areas as they're currently situated won't be impacted. As Tracy mentioned, we did remodel the kitchen and what I call our common room, great room area back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. That was really just to update the house which needed it. We had moved after we moved in. And frankly, by doing the addition in the in the where in the area that you see on these plans, we don't have to really undo any of the costs that we sunk into our house back in twenty eighteen to make those improvements to really our living, living area and kitchen. You know, we talked with Matt, our architect, who you hear from a sec about a whole bunch of options. You know, we looked at a larger second story, truthfully. But the fact of the matter is, we didn't think we needed it, right? So that's why you see kind of what I I regard as somewhat modest. You know, one bed, one bath with a little office nook for my wife and a closet for us. And, you know, we kept the height kind of right around twenty two feet. We didn't think it needed to be any bigger. Didn't didn't just feel the need that. And then the lower story that Tracy mentioned, we're trying to call it a den and gym area. I feel like it's going to become a playroom pretty quickly, but it's really just encapsulating the space that's going to be below the to be constructed bedroom upstairs and is currently used as kind of an outdoor dining area. So it's a pretty easy, I guess, add to just capture some additional space for, you know, an excess room. I guess I'll talk a little bit about the kind of substantial improvements before turning over to Matt. You know, what we had talked about with Phil Boyle at the outset was kind of how this whole ratio worked and how we needed to wait five years from the date of kind of the building permit issuance on our twenty eighteen project to reset. And so we've known all along that we wouldn't start the project until, you know, let's call it the summer of twenty twenty three. Truthfully, we don't want to really start a construction process in the winter months anyway. So we're here because the timing kind of lines up and we know we're going to have to go through, you know, the building department and other processes anyway over the coming months. So, you know, that's that's all fine. That's been the intention all along. We again, received two geotechnical reports, not necessarily for FEMA, but because I wanted and my wife wanted, I think, certainty that we had a site knowing that we were on Phil that had good, solid enough ground under it to support the investment that we wanted to make to build up. And I would say that both of those results were, I think, pretty solid. And frankly, both of the geotechnical experts who work in Marin were actually a little bit surprised to see how good the borings were compared to some other homes they've worked on in our area. And so from a structural perspective, after looking at the geotech and then also talking to a few structurals, again, the cost, I think, is certainly, you know, better in the project that we've done. And, you know, the numbers that Tracy put on the screen are what I really view to be a worst case scenario. Because, you know, we kind of priced it to really the worst case scenario in the max. I think there's a probably good chance that we we can do it. We're end up doing it for less, but I didn't want to run into an issue where we would trip over the the calculation. So we took a lot of care into that and and to be sure to navigate that. So with that, I probably will turn over to our architect, Matt, to talk a little bit about the project.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I am guys really covered it. Between JR and Tracy, everything's been covered from top to bottom. My checklist really doesn't need to be, don't need to go through too much more. It's a couple of things I want to reiterate on this is that we we're trying to keep with the flavor of the neighborhood and keep it so it's not such a gigantic house in the neighborhood. We kept the heights down as JR pointed out, as Tracy pointed out, kept the height of the roof down. Similar to Eric's project that he presented earlier, we did change the slope of the roof from the lower level, which is a four twelve to the upper level, which is a five twelve, for the same exact reason that he stated is that we wanted this have a little bit more of a view presence of the roof rather than it looking flat. I think that's a common thing, a common practice to do in architecture. With materials, we were trying to pull in some beachy, natural flair into the house that whitewashed wood, the light colors, the white. And then they have the blue that you see on that board as an existing blue door that we're going to continue using and capture. Darker roof on the house to ground it or to make it have a grounded feeling. The floor plan is pretty simple. We did our best to try to capture to try to not impact much of the existing floor plan. Reworking the laundry area is an easy is an easy area to work in and that allowed us to give a good stairway to go up to the front or up to the second floor. What else can I capture? We we are well under the FAR, well under the lot coverage and with that side setback, we, the side setback on the one twenty nine side, we are ten foot, was it ten foot nine on the second story, which and we're required a six foot. So other than that, I'd like to just open it up for questions.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Rizzo, I'm going to let you have the first crack at model. Any questions for him?
I don't have any questions this evening. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Dr. Bundy.
No, I guess I'd I'd make a comment in general. We like to see the second story somewhat centered over the house, but understanding the issues with the previous kitchen remodel and the vaulted ceiling, you know, that would really be prohibitive from the standpoint of what had been done before. And I think with the setbacks, I guess, to the the next house on Yolo, you've got pretty good setbacks. There's nice vegetation. I think the sense of, you know, privacy and the overall sense that this isn't, you know, a big second story, you know, fits in. So nicely done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Margaret, do you have any questions from?
I don't have any questions. No.
Okay. All right. So that said, then we will take it to the public comment section of this item. And we will open up the public comment section for anyone who wishes to do so for a three minute comment. And I'll ask Tracy if she has any hands raised.
We do. We have Neville Tijani. I'm sorry if I didn't say that right. You'll need to unmute yourself and you can go ahead and and speak.
Hi, my name is Nabeel Tajani. Good evening, everyone. My wife and I own the home at Six Channel Drive. And we're next door neighbors to the north of the Garibaldis. I'd like to begin my comments by expressing our support for the addition. I think it's a really nice design and we're happy that the Garibaldis have a new son that recently joined their family. We understand why they're interested in expanding their home. They did share their plans with us a few months ago. We'd also like to thank Tracy for, through our planning to come out to our property to discuss our perspective of the story polls. I ultimately met with Mr. Garibaldi for almost an hour last week to discuss the impacts of the addition. Now, due to the uncommon nature of our adjacent lots, our homes, if you look at the first slide that Tracy showed, they stand at almost forty five degrees to to each other. And this does create a situation where occupants using the addition and terrace will be able to see into some portions of our yard and dock and vice versa. We're okay with this, given the overall views that most homes along the creek share into each other's backyards. The applicants did explain some of the design setback and budget considerations that led to the final design with us. And I have faith that they will be happy with their addition and they can make any small adjustments necessary to address any privacy for their bedroom tenants. So thank you for your time and I do support the project.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Tracy?
I don't see anyone else, Tracy.
Okay. And since I can't, oh, I can't see the room, but I trust no one standing up at the podium. So.
No, I'll go sit down.
All right. So that means we'll close the public comment section of this item. And we'll bring it back to discuss for discussion. Bob, do you have anything else that you would like to say?
Sorry to interrupt. Me need to reopen the the public. There isn't any, the email from Dan Kenny says something about the project at one twenty five yellow as well.
Okay, well then let's do that. Let's reopen the public comment and read that into the record.
This is from Dan Kenny. Hi, Martha. I regret to be absent for the planning commission meeting on November twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two. As discussed earlier, I'll be absent because of the change in meeting date from eleven twenty two to eleven twenty nine and previous planned vacation travel. That's not changeable and conflicts with the eleven twenty nine date. While I will not be present at the meeting or voting, I want to share my thoughts with planning staff and the other planning commission members. Please forward this email to the planning staff and commission members. I have made site visits to both eighty nine Birch Avenue and one twenty five Yellow Street, viewed the story polls and toured the general neighborhoods. I have reviewed the planning staff report dated November twenty ninth twenty twenty two, drawing documents and neighbor outreach correspondence for both projects. My opinion on the two major designer view applications follow. This is entitled one twenty five Yellow Street. The staff report indicates consistency with the general plan implementation program CD two point four A and required design review findings. There appear to be no negative impacts on neighbor views or privacy. The proposed project design improves the character of the street elevation consistent with other properties in the neighborhood. While not voting, I am in support of conditional approval of major designer view application PL twenty two dash zero zero five three.
Okay, very good. Is anyone else joining the public comment section here?
It's no, no one else has.
Okay, then we'll close it. All right, we'll close the public comment section. And I'll go back and we'll start with commissioner feedback and comments on this application. So, um, to that end, we'll start with you, Dr. Bundy, and see if there's anything else you wanted to add to your previous comment.
I appreciate, uh, Neville, uh, calling in and having, you know, major discussions with, uh, uh, JR on this. Uh, to, uh, the little trellises, the little decks are always, uh, second, the second story decks are always a potential concern with privacy, although they're, this is a small one and, you know, these really do have limited use. They're, they're the aesthetics of it more than anything else. And a lot can be done by just, uh, thinking carefully about plantings, vegetation and such that goes on. Um, so overall, uh, I think this is, uh, a nice addition. The streetscape, as it, as it, uh, uh, appears on Yolo is, uh, much improved, although I guess some people will miss these iconic arches that you have on the house. But I think a very, very thoughtful design, not an overwhelming second story presence. Uh, while it is off on one end of the house, it, it does have a ridgeline that stretches along it. I think it fits in. I think it works. I support the project. I can make the findings.
Thank you, Bob. That's great. Um, I turn to you, Margaret.
I gotta say, I've driven by the house for years, years and years, and I always wondered about those arches. It just really, uh, you know, um, I, to me, this looks lopsided. I, I understand why it had to be the way it was. It was good explanation. I understand it. But to me, it looks more lopsided than I've seen in a long time. That's, I don't know if that really, I love the materials that are used. I think that'll be beautiful, but it just is lopsided. The other thing that, um, bothers me about, you know, and, and I understand Bob's comments, which are very, um, always very, very, I trust them completely, but it, it bothers me how this floodplain is manipulated by waiting a certain amount of time to either use this, the amount that was, you know, already put into the house or not. It's, it, to me, it's a, it's a manipulation of a rule and I don't, um, it bothers me that people do that. And even, um, the comment that, um, Mrs. Garibaldi made to a neighbor saying, oh, don't worry, we won't be starting it till May, you know, um. It was one of the comments made to, to, to a neighbor when we were talking about it. She wanted to know, um, she wanted advanced notice as to when it was going to be noisy. And you said, you know, don't worry, we won't be starting it till May. Uh, you know, I've, I've lived across the street from a project that's going on seven years now. And, and, um, waiting and getting, you know, design approval months before you even intend to start a project with, uh, no knowledge of how things may change between now and then. Um, and then this sort of manipulation of this floodplain rules, it just, um, and, and again, I understand why it's done completely. And I understand the idea that it's very expensive to put an addition on and you have to, uh, cut corners, not cut corners, that's the wrong word. Um, you have to be careful about how you do things and when you do them, but, um, it's disturbing to me. That's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Margaret. We'll come back and ask you about that some more. Um, uh, to Mr. Rizzo.
Um, hi. Um, you know, I, I could, I agree with, um, uh, Dr. Bundy, um, and, and, and some comments that, um, Commissioner Vandell said as well. I mean, I, uh, and, and you had mentioned, actually, um, Chair Chase, you mentioned it on our last project, but it, it is a law. Um, I, I think that, you know, would I like to see some of these houses raised? I, I would, but, um, you know, we're, we abide by, um, by the ordinance that are in place. And, you know, I, I, it seems that if, if, if that's the way it is, you know, after, after May, March was it, then, or May, then, then it's part of our law. And if we decide to change that, um, it should be allowed. Um, I, I feel like, um, the, the, the house actually reads better in, in the renderings and it does any elevations. It feels a bit more balanced in the renderings, in my opinion. Um, definitely, definitely an improvement to the, to the streetscape and, and, and the facade. You know, growing up in Arizona, I've seen a lot of those offices, but, um, I think, uh, this, this, these, this new design actually plays a lot better with what we have here in our nor- northern, um, California vernacular right now. So, um, you know, all in all, I, it being that, you know, only twenty-one feet and, and below all the FIR guidelines, you know, I, I, I don't, I can't find anything that I couldn't support this with, um, so I could make mo-, you know, all the findings to support it in the end. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Yeah, I, I think that, um, my comment about the, uh, floodplain ordinance has the fact that I, I don't feel like the kitchen remodel and the solar project should be held as a part of that, uh, intention or that cost, but that's the way the law reads. Um, I don't think that when they did the kitchen remodel, they were planning on doing this larger remodel as the law for five years is designated to, or designed to, uh, prevent people from, um, doing piecemeal or build-ons. So, um, I, I do feel like, you know, they're doing the right thing to follow the letter of the law and no way to go May to do it. Um, so that's fine. They have to. I, as I heard that the, the raising of this building would not be significant. Is that correct, Tracy?
May- maybe I'll see if Matt knows the answer to that question. Do you know the, um, threshold elevation?
He'll know the actual answer. I don't have the actual calculation for it, but, um, it is insignificant. It's, it's very little that it would need to be raised, um, inches, not, we're not talking feet. So we're not talking three feet off of, off of the existing foundation. And to go in there and do that type of work, you're not just tapping on a cap onto a piece of foundation. You have to redo the whole thing. So, uh, financially, it's just like the other project, you'd have to do the whole perimeter of the house and it adds five, six hundred thousand dollars to the budget and it's just not in there.
Okay, thank you. No, I didn't mean to drag you up there. Uh, but thank you for that. Um, so, um, I agree with Margaret's, uh, comment about the slightly, uh, off-center, uh, feeling of this addition, but we've had to accept that fact with a number of others, just for economics and, uh, stacking of the building over certain parts of it. I think that we heard from the applicant that economics played a big part of how they're going about this, uh, from the, the where and the when and how much, um, they could be entitled to more. Um, but I, I think they kept it within a reason and within a budget. And that's, uh, the way of the world right now. Um, so, um, I, it will be an improvement to the neighborhood. It will be an improvement to the property. And, um, I feel like I can make the findings for this. So, um, with that said, um, I would be open to, uh, a motion for this.
I'll make a motion in the matter of design review application PL two-two dash oh oh five three for a, uh, three hundred and five point eight square foot first level addition and an eight hundred and forty-three square foot second level addition to an existing single story home at one twenty-five Yolo Street. I so move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you, Margaret. All right, roll call.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandell?
Yes.
Chair Chase?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
And with Commissioner Kenny absent.
Okay. Well, good luck to you. Advocate, do you want to read the appeal rights here?
Yeah, following action by the planning commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department at Corder Madera Town Hall or on a website with a three hundred dollar filing fee required.
Okay. So applicants will probably exit the room. Yeah, we'll be left with very few people there.
Welcome to stay.
Is, is that siding or is it flooring?
It's siding.
That siding?
Okay. Um, I'm gonna move on to commissioner reports. And, uh, I attended the, uh, November fifteenth meeting on the town council. And, um, I will just say that, you know, they, um, moved the building codes, they had to adopt the building codes, the, um, uh, electrical code, the mechanical code, plumbing code, historic building code, all of those things got adopted uh, in short order, as they should be. And, um, then there was also the, uh, fire code, uh, and the twenty-twenty-one woo-wee interface code. That also got adopted very quickly, very important. And then there were, um, two items that took a little more discussion. Uh, one was the, uh, proposed ordinance establishing regulations for the subdivision development of qualified Senate Bill nine projects, including amendments. So, um, I think that, um, after a great, uh, presentation, uh, what that meant, I think the council was all on board with everything. Uh, there was some concern about, um, the, uh, receptivity of the town to these things, but it turns out that, um, Corder Madera has more applications than just about anybody else around. And Martha could speak to that, uh, at the end of this here. Um, but, um, so the regulations, um, will be heard for a second hearing, I believe. Uh, I don't know when that will be, Martha. Will that be upcoming in December?
December sixth.
Yeah, okay. And then, um, it'll, uh, become an ordinance and, uh, we'll be able to deal with, uh, the Senate Bill nine projects as they are occurring. Uh, I read in the paper where other communities are woefully unprepared. And I gotta hand it to staff, Martha and Adam and Tracy for getting this over the hump and we're in a good position. But the most, uh, uh, significant item was the emergency, uh, uh, urgency ordinance for temporary permit program of the, uh, street parking, parklets, right? So we have two that are in effect, really in front of the cafe and, um, Burnetown and the other one in front of Zins. Those are in that effect, the ones that are under discussion. Um, although there are others around, but those two are the ones that, um, people are aware of and are causing any, um, consternation. So, um, one of the, um, items that, um, was in the staff report was the consideration of design standards for these parklets and that, um, they're working on those. They were proposing to extend this temporary, uh, ordinance for another year while they work all this out. Um, as a result of feedback from, uh, neighbors to Zins, they have come up with a three-month, uh, time period to, uh, tighten the, or define the, uh, parameters of the parking, uh, spaces that can be used. And then they're going to, uh, continue to work on the whole ordinance for the rest of the year. Um, and Martha, you can correct me if I have any of that wrong. Um, but I think that's where it landed. So, uh, the, the good news is that those are going to continue. Uh, staff has got, uh, a good game plan for figuring out what these, um, parklets are gonna look like. Um, and come up with some design standards and some other, uh, parameters that are necessary um, to codify this so that, um, this would be in, in place until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Anything you want to add to that, Martha?
I know you did an excellent job capturing, uh, the SB nine and then also the parklets. And I also, I do want to thank Ann. She was instrumental in those urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance for both of those items as well.
Yeah.
Absolutely. On the fly, uh, commentary, yes. That was all very important. Um, so, uh, again, I just am, uh, so appreciative of how staff has gotten their hands around the housing element and around SB nine. Uh, we've got the odds toolkit and, you know, we're in great shape, I think, to deal with these various things. So, um, Martha, it's your turn or Tracy's turn, uh, to also comment, uh, your bullet point two here for planning staff contribution.
Yeah, I'll add that the commission will only be meeting one time in December, on December thirteenth, uh, two, two, two weeks from now. And at that meeting, you will be considering the ordinance amendment for the rezoning of the housing opportunity sites in addition to, uh, land use elements, um, and considering the environmental document as well. So that will be, um, a big meeting. I don't think we'll have any other items on, on the agenda likely. And then the second meeting, the December twenty-seventh, will be canceled due to the, the holidays. Well, I have.
Anybody else? No. Um, so beyond that future item for the December thirteenth, uh, anything to look forward to in the new year? No, Martha, I guess not.
We do have, we do have an application that will come to you in the new year for, um, a new, uh, Total Wine &amp; More store at the marketplace. Um, and then we have a few other, um, uh, residential projects, uh, in the pipeline coming to you in the new year as well.
Where's that gonna be?
Uh, at the marketplace, right down here on.
Let's see. I can't tell if we had someone. When are they gonna tear up, uh, Tamil Vista again? Does anybody know that? No, okay.
No, I, we could, uh, check with, uh, RJ in the Public Works Department and report back.
That's all right. I'll just ask. I, I keep hearing about the work that they're doing in the vicinity and wondering when that's gonna, uh, turn into something more significant out there, right? and wondering when that's gonna uh turn into something more significant out there, right? Okay, so with that said, we have minutes to approve. Any commentary on the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of November ninth, uh twenty twenty-two uh planning commission.
All right. Voice vote. I approve.
Hi.
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 unanimous.
Okay, thank you. All right. So um here it is, a record short meeting. Um and um I'm going to sign it off and go back to my
Want me to tap for you?
Slam that gavel.
Well done.
Meeting is closed. Thank you.
All right, all. Get better, Peter.